Okay, Wednesday, June 18th, ZBA meeting, 7:08 PM, we'll start.
Motion open, right?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 You want to read the first one, Blaine?
Yeah. Public hearing will be held at Town Hall. Applicant Mark Moore, 81, Howland Lane, map 38, lot 191, seeks a special variance from the required front yard setback from Lay Road to build an open deck. Variance being requested under the language of Kingston bylaw section 10.4b MGL. This is already open, so.
Right.
We can hear from the applicant.
Yeah, so where we can hear.
You have to put the mic on. Then you have to say your name and address.
Hear me now? Yeah, this is Mark Moore, 81, Howland Lane in Kingston. We good? Okay. Yeah, so where we left off is Matt was here, Matt Pennell from conservation, and he expressed concerns about proximity to the wetlands, so he did a site visit after I applied for what he called administrative application, or through administrative request, which was just a form, and I paid some money, and he came out and did a site visit. He measured, and under that deck and other section, I met requirements 1 through 6, which is all he wanted, meaning it's more than 50 feet away from the wetlands, you know, the closest part of the deck. And the deck could not be larger than 200 square feet, which it's just under 200 square feet. So while he was there, I asked him approval on a couple other things you'll see on there, and so he actually gave me, so he ended up giving me approval on that. And so that's why I'm back here, is to basically continue with this request now that I have conservation approval.
Okay, so that was a s- Special?
He called administrative approval. There's two types of approvals you can get. One's administrative, which means he just comes out, does a site visit, and checks things out. The other would be if it failed that, or if I did, I wanted to go the other way, then I'd have to prove a hardship of some kind. So I don't have to prove the hardship, he's saying, because I passed the administrative requirements.
So what's changed since the last time you came before us?
The only thing that's changed is I now have the conservation approval.
Okay, but the same footprint?
Oh yeah, everything's the same, except I didn't note on the details for the deck construction, because I didn't know at the time that I would need the 3/8 inch board separation on the floor, but that's what I'll need according to conservation.
So what kind of, what do you mean by board separation?
So the deck, the floorboards on a deck, they have usually some kind of separation on them, right? So rain can go through it. So he's just saying that minimum separation has to be 3/8 of an inch.
Yeah, conservation requires a certain minimum amount of space. So when the rain comes down, it permeates properly.
So it's to make it pervious is the wording he used?
Yeah. Impervious, perv- I can't even figure that word.
Impervious mean the rain would not go through, and that would then not meet the requirement of having so many square feet of impervious structure. Not being over a certain percent. He said if you make it pervious.
Certain percentage, and you're probably right.
Yeah, right.
Okay, I mean, there's a separation on, you know, normally on decks.
Yes, it's sometimes, sometimes people will put them together, I don't know why they do that. If they use regular boards, eventually it's going to shrink over time, and it will create a gap.
Yeah.
But sometimes people only put like a quarter inch. I think 3/8 inch is just a little bit bigger than quarter inch.
Yeah, it goes to the ground naturally, correct.
I have no questions.
Lane, are you done?
Yeah.
I, you're here asking for a variance, right?
Approval on a special, it turned out initially was a permit, but because I abut two streets, it turned into a variance.
Right. And you're asking for a variance from the street setbacks, as I understand?
That's right.
Because you're on this, like, like a dual corner lot, your house is like a little pie wedge, it looks like. Okay. And it's that street configuration and your lot config, those two factors combined, is that what prevents you from needing?
It's why it turned into a special variance, as opposed to just a regular permit, but really the, what's, what's being requested is that I can't be closer than 25 feet from the street on a structure.
Right.
Which I'm fine now, I'm in compliance, but the deck would put it something like 15, if you look at the diagram, feet from the street.
So you would be 10 feet, so we would be waving, giving you this 10-foot.
Yes.
Inception to the setback.
That's essentially exception, because that's the only reason it doesn't meet the normal requirements of building a structure.
Because of where the house was put on the lot? I'm just struggling, because I want to get to yes, I do.
So I look back on the history of permits, as you suggested last time. The house was permitted to be within a certain distance of the wetlands, which is where it is now, obviously. And with the agreement that nothing could be touched within the 25-foot zone of the wetland, which nothing is, that's just, that's just trees and brush and stuff. But anything built within 50 feet of the wetlands is under the jurisdiction of conservation, which is why Matt got involved, but he's approved it. So now I'm past that, really the only thing I need approval on is the, to be closer than 25 feet from the border of the property with the deck.
Right, and you're applying under section 10 of our bylaws?
I guess, yeah, whatever, it's on the form.
So I guess I just, I'm struggling to find out, let me ask you. Have you looked at the criteria that we have to consider in granting you this 10-foot sort of waiver? Do you understand that there's a certain burden that you bear?
I did.
Sort of like convincing us?
Yeah.
Do you under, okay.
Yeah, I basically can't build the deck on any other side of the house, because it wouldn't be practical. So I'm trying to build on a side that has a sliding glass door, meaning, so it's an entry and exit from my kitchen that I can get onto the deck easily. My lawn is very uneven and sloping, so it's hard to have like an area out there where I can sit and cook meals and have guests and stuff, so that's the, that's what I'm, that's why I'm trying to build, get the deck built.
Is your lot, you know, this pie-shaped, you know, at the intersection of these two streets, are there a lot of lots like that in the neighborhood, or is yours really the only one?
Might not be the only one, but I think they're.
It's somewhat unique. He has two streets.
I know that. But he had two streets when the house was built.
So he's got a fence, this is Howland's, this is Lay Road, the deck wants to go right there, so there's the wet man in the back, so he must put it right there. He's got fences protected. He's got fences protected.
Again, I'm just having a, the, the, the bylaw, I, just trying to see where you fall. If this, if it doesn't generally affect other structures in your neighborhood, that's a unique factor that we're able to consider. So I'm just, I don't know your neighborhood that well.
Yeah. I don't think there's many other houses like that.
No, it's, it's, it's pretty contained.
I don't have any neighbors except on one side, but it's on the side of the house that, it's the opposite side of the house from where the proposed deck is. All my, the only other neighbor, direct neighbor, it's on the other side of Lay Street is my only other neighbor that's right in the vicinity. And I've got a fence around that side of the, the house, so it's, everything's enclosed, you can't even see it from the street.
And the hardship, that's one of it. Is it a financial hardship to put it someplace else? If it's not, just, that's fine, because it can be another kind of hardship.
To find a place to put it.
No, not a financial hardship.
Okay, I didn't think so.
Just a practicality, like it would make no sense to put it anywhere else on the house.
What about like in terms of, you know, fire, ingress, egress? Are you improving those factors? I remember the last time there was some odd garage door, anything that would fall into that category.
No, so the garage door, the deck, the deck would come right before.
She's trying to help you.
I am struggling to get to yes on this.
Okay.
So with that in mind.
Does it help with fire?
Yeah.
Escape?
Egress.
Sure, I mean, it, that, that external door on the garage is still there, there's nothing preventing you from getting out there quickly, so.
But what if that, you had to exit from the upper floor?
Yeah.
And there was fire preventing you from going.
Sure.
Would the deck give you an exit?
It would, because you'd be able to come out from the kitchen and be right on the deck, there'd be no stairs to go down, whatever, so from, and from that point of view, it's actually easier to get out of the building if, if there's a fire.
With your deck?
With the deck, yes.
I don't know, I mean, he has, you have stairs there right now, right?
I have a couple stairs, yeah. It's, and they're, they're rotting, which is why I'm addressing this as well. I don't know if you call, that would be considered a hardship, but I need to replace the steps.
Anyway.
Anyway, so I figured, well, might as well put something a little bit bigger in there if I can.
Thank you, I appreciate.
Welcome.
You're patient.
I'm good. Okay, just, just so I get this straight here, I just want to not to keep going over this, but on this detailed plan here, the existing sliding door is there, and then you're going to build a 12 by 16 deck and then stairs?
And stairs coming from the, the deck to get to the lawn, yeah.
To the ground. Correct. And, and right now you just have coming out of that sliders, there's just a set of stairs?
Just a small set of stairs, yeah, that's right.
Set of stairs, okay. All right.
That technically aren't, in my opinion, not even built properly, and so that's a safety concern in, in itself, because they're kind of getting wobbly.
Uh huh.
And I'm hoping that, last time, like someone brought in a replacement washer last year, they had to bring it into the house with a dolly on those steps, and I was like, I hope they don't break now.
One final question, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
I noticed, Bob showed me an aerial photo of your property showing that it's fenced in, you have a nice white fence around. Will your, the deck create any privacy concerns for neighbors, you know, like you'll be up higher than they are and be able to see? Or will your fence really prevent anybody from seeing your deck?
So I have a bunch of trees that grow, so remember I said I have one neighbor across the street?
Yes.
He's the only neighbor I can see from that side of the house, but there's a whole bunch of like trees in that line of sight, so I can't see my neighbor anyway unless I really like go up to my fence.
And he can't see you.
And they can't see me.
And he wouldn't be able to see you sitting on your deck.
Right.
Thank you.
So there's still privacy there.
Is that all? I'm good. Okay, nobody here from the public, is anybody on Zoom that would like to speak about this?
Hello, my name's Jimmy Pell, I live at 93 Elm Street. I'm actually mostly just saying no agenda was posted, I had to access this Zoom link through a previous posting, and I couldn't type that into chat.
It was posted, and there was an error that was made with the system.
Mayor, I think we.
I apologize, there was an error today with it being posted three times on the website, and it never got reposted, but it has been posted.
Oh, okay, sorry, I would, I always just check these things in a matter of course, and I just didn't see an agenda.
Yeah.
Before this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Yeah.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a proposal to accept.
Well, do you want to talk about it first, or?
I'm, I'm good with it, I have no problem with it, but if you want to talk about it ahead, but I have no problem with it.
Do you have anything?
Marsha?
It's a tough, it's, it's a tough case. It's a tough case, I'll be honest with you. But it does seem like a unique lot situation. It's a tiny bit of hardship, I think. And there's nobody here opposing it, which to me is a very substantial factor in the exercise of my discretion, so I'm inclined to, even though it's kind of thin, I'm inclined to approve it.
Okay, well, thanks for all the good questions.
I make a proposal to approve the request.
Second.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I guess you could call the Building Department and talk to the Building Inspector, you can set the process up, they'll tell you what to do.
You talk to Paul or somebody?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
I move adjourn.
We'll wait.
Oh, we have to do something else?
Um, I'll make a motion, so there, I, I spoke with Paul today about there needs to be a waiver?
Yep, they have a waiver, but it's good until 8:31, they just send you any.
Oh, okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to continue this, I'm sorry, to continue Cushman Farms' application until August 6th at, what time?
August 6th.
7:05.
August 6th, please?
Yes. Can I get a second?
Yeah, second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that was it?
Oh, can, can we ask the Cushman Farms people for a site review? It would really help me, I know you people are way more familiar with the area, but this one-way onto copper ri, I mean, I just need to sort of get the lay of the land, I think, before I can wrap my.
I'll call up with them, because they were going to get a couple of dates back to me, but they didn't want the general public, and they were going to mock stuff out, so I'll check with Tanya and Megan and Rick.
I think the general public has to be allowed to participate, but I'm not, I'm not the town council.
I think that they.
Is it a liability?
It's a liability, that they just want a town.
I don't, then we all can't go, because it would be a meeting, and, I mean, we can't, again, that's, I'm just struggling to, can we?
Do a drive-by and check it out.
But you have to get onto the land to, to know where these things are going to be located, as I understand. I mean, I kind of want to see, you know.
I agree, I think that we should, um.
Building's going to be.
Give everything that we can to.
Review.
Yes.
Get to review this.
Me too.
So that we have a good record.
I agree.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, and I don't know how we accomplish that, if there's a liability concern, maybe we just go in groups of two?
I'll work with, I'll talk to Paul Armstrong on Monday, and David, the Building Commissioner, and I'll work with Tanya and Megan and Rick on Cushman Farms.
But I, I would, I just think that Blaine's point is, is well taken.
Yeah.
So, that's my only comment.
Well, yeah, I mean, we voted to have this go through, and so they need to do everything to make it accessible to us, to know what's actually going there. Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
For sure.
So that would be helpful.
I make a motion that we adjourn. Oh no, can we do that now?
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
If I just ask one question, so the next meeting is when?
So I'm going to talk to Paul, because the next meeting should be July 2nd, but it's, 4th July is that Friday, so I'm thinking that the next one would be, I think it's the 17th of July.
16th, I think, it's the fourth day, 16th.
Is anything scheduled?
Nothing scheduled.
Okay. So nothing scheduled for the 2nd either?
No.
Okay.
And would Cushman Farms be the only thing on the 15th?
On the, on the 6th of August.
Oh, they're coming back on the 6th of August?
The next meeting is the 6th of August?
That's, that's the date that they can make.
Yeah, 6th of August, okay.
Do we have anything that we need to hear on the 16th then?
Only Cushman Farms.
So we don't, we don't.
No.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, on August 6th, that's the only thing they have.
So we don't.
There's nothing on the board, I have no new applications.
Okay.
Great.
So obviously if something comes up, Janine, you'll let us know.
And that way they have, they have any plans or anything that they've changed and everything, they can show us so we can review it ahead of time.
Yeah.
That would be great.
We get the month of July off.
Right, and will their guy, their guys be here? Will our guy that did the review?
Brian will be here.
And will their people be here as well?
Yes, either Zoom or in person.
Okay.
Cool.
And can we make a request of them that they submit their waivers?
They've already done that.
Oh, we're, I haven't seen that, I should, have you sent us that? I should look for that.
I usually just update them and then file them.
Because.
At the clerk's office.
He didn't mention, he mentioned all these things that it didn't comply with the parking, so I was assuming they're going to seek waivers on the parking layout.
I haven't seen waivers on.
The zoning?
The zoning, no.
No, you're saying the timeline waivers?
Yes.
I'm thinking the waivers they're going to be seeking, at least on the parking issue, because the, the report devoted a lot of time to that.
So Pat Ryan just put me in touch with, I've had no luck trying to secure someone to do the traffic study, so people have not accepted the job, so I have somebody doing that, and we should have that report by the next time we need the traffic study.
They, he should.
Yeah, I had talked to a couple of firms that are on Val's list, and they didn't want to accept the job, so I've been reaching out to different people and finally secured some people to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
We would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Third time's a charm.
Yeah.
I'll second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.